Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Rizzi.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Les Prince.
Yeah.
Treasurer Kristang.
Yeah.
Trustee Nor Dyke.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
It's a state of the United States, America. To the Republic which stands one nation. In this book, the Constitution of Justice.
Before we approve tonight's agenda, we should amend it to reflect that we do actually have one presentation tonight. We've got Parks Director Dan Zwick and also Mike Reese of Troyer Group. Just the firm creating the long, a long-term possible master plan or possible plan for improvements at the rec park over on Thornapple River Drive. They're both here tonight to give the board an update on that. So with that amendment, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda amended as stated for the parks presentation.
Support.
So motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi to approve. The agenda with the earlier amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted. Motion carried. So Article Four, Mr. Reese and Mr. Zwick, thanks for coming tonight. Coming back since your last time in November. Please proceed.
Well, thank you. It's exciting to present the master plan for the rec park. Since a couple of months ago when we originally presented some preliminary concepts. We've been able to take the feedback from the board from that evening. We had several meetings with township staff, Supervisor Les Prince, Treasurer Kristang, Township Manager Smith. And was able to walk the site, look at a lot more things with Director Zwick and kind of narrow things down and develop this master plan. Through the feedback we've had. Some of the things that became evident from the board and staff. We wanted to keep the baseball fields. Those are actually have some improvements going on this year to make them more playable and then can get a accurate feel for how well they're used now that they're in a more playable condition. The pickleball courts, the current courts are in deteriorating condition. So we wanted to look at where the best place in the park for those to be. We had few different options of keeping it in place or moving it to where the soccer was or where it's shown on this plan in the southeast portion and some of the benefits here was kind of having it away from the housing, especially if later evening play, if we wanted to, since we're adding more courts, being able to have lighting. Ever host tournaments or work with the Grand Rapids Pickleball Club. There's a lot of members in Cascade that are part of that that go to Grand Rapids to play. So those are some of the things that were discussed in this area was felt to be a better fit. For that expansion and being able to have lighting and kind of have that area without being near those houses on the north side. Another item was the phasing. So this is the kind of full future build out that could take many, many years to accomplish. And I'll go through the phasing that was discussed of how we can get to this point over time. The first phase, we really wanted to focus on what we have and improving that and making that better deferred maintenance, those sort of things. Another item was the soccer field. Wanting the natural grass like we have it, but upgrading grading it smooth, improving the irrigation. Another idea that was well liked was replacing the restroom building, making that larger, having a pavilion space that is rentable. With that theme of the splash pad and ice rink area up by the sliding hill and current playground. Another thing that was well liked is moving the volleyball court up by the basketball court. So it's a better location than where it is now with kind of some similar uses. And then we discussed the native plantings. That was something that the Parks Committee had felt strongly about integrating more of that into the park. But we wanted to focus on doing the smaller area first and kind of testing that out, making sure it's well received and works well to reap the benefits that those areas could provide. And then finally, the northwest parcel that's actually owned by the county, having that as a future phase that could be done. You know, years from now with kind of minimal improvement in that area. So with that feedback, you can kind of see this final updated version of the plan and I'll walk through these phasing and how we can get to that point. So just kind of overall, again, moving the pickleball to that southeast portion that allows the current area where the pickleball courts are to be a kind of a youth, younger kid soccer area. With seven V seven and nine V nine fields, adding a pavilion restroom there for that area. And then the existing soccer field, the full size one can remain in place. And then eventually adding restroom out there with a small playground. That your siblings can play on and have some, have something out there for games and events. And then just improvements to the baseball fields such as bleachers, accessibility for sidewalks right now. It's difficult to get to those ball fields. And then up in the northeast portion, adding that kind of the splash pad near the playground, potential ice rink to kind of get that winter destination area with the sliding hill already in place and then upgrading that restroom building to be a four season use. So it could be rented and then used for daily use with those adjacent activities of the splash pad and ice rink. So looking at costs. I'll go, we have an estimate for each of the four phases. But you can see in total, it's just a little bit under 10 million. So obviously that's a very large price tag. So that's why we're looking at how this could be phased and prioritized, being able to, you know, go after grants through DNR. Michigan Economic Development and look, you know, looking at other funding mechanisms such as millages or bonds that could potentially be used to make this happen over the coming years. But I'll go through those a little bit more with each phase. So Phase One, as I kind of mentioned, it would be a focus on what we have already and making those things better. Some deferred maintenance items, so you can see the maintenance garage replacement, adding some interior walking paths in the dog park. Improving the ball fields and soccer fields that are there. Volleyball court and then at that pond in the southeast corner, clearing out that area to make it a little bit more accessible, providing a walk. I know board walker pier to get some access to that pond. So looking at this, a little over a million dollars. So part of that is the cost for the maintenance garage. We had 300,000 in there. Also, this included the water line extension, but there's also potential funding separately through the, I believe it was PFAS remediation. So some of the what, those costs could be taken care of through other things, but we still wanted to include it in here, but that water line could come from the neighborhood to the north to that restroom building and then also supply irrigation and the other proposed restrooms. So the more that we could get that run upfront, that could save some costs later in the project. But otherwise it's, you know, it's kind of upgrading the things we have. These prices are based on, you know, bidding out to a contractor. Some of this stuff we could potentially do with township staff or smaller contracts for individual items. This wouldn't have to be one big project. Second phase, we had the pickleball courts being relocated, just with the condition that those are in, they work, but it would be a priority to get those upgraded and rather expanding there to create that new pickleball area.
Mike, did you look at, look into just up resealing or maintaining fixing up the ones we have?
Yeah, so you could upgrade those and then expand next to those. But the condition of the base pavement, if you just did an overlay, it would probably crack, do that reflective cracking through there. Within, you know, three to five years, you wouldn't get that longevity. So if you're putting a new six, a bank of six pickleball courts next to it. It'd be worthwhile to redo the existing ones. So whether they're there or somewhere else in the park would be the very similar cost. So then with those moving, there would then be a soccer field in that place, being able to grade that level and reseed. And then since that northern soccer area would be completed, adding the restroom and pavilion up by those soccer fields. We also included the main drive and parking lot repaving in this. Again, this could be done part of this project or separately with other roadway projects, depending how you could get some bids in for, you know, if you have a larger project of asphalt, you could get some better unit prices. Also, the main drive is deteriorating more than some of the other parking lots. So that main drive and the main parking lot was the kind of priority as far as repaving goes. Looking at costs, we used asphalt for the pickleball courts. That is the most economical option. You know, this, the cost in there of 60,000 per court would give you a good section of asphalt and base aggregate that you get a good life expectancy on those courts of, you know, 10 plus years, 15 years before needing resurfacing. But there are, you could do a post tensioned concrete. It's probably twice the cost, but you could expand that to more like 20 plus years. Basically that is a concrete slab, but it's tensioned on the sides to keep that compressed. So concrete will crack in our climate no matter what, but that keeps the cracks very minimal. And then the acrylic overlay will span those smaller cracks just fine. So you won't even see them on the surface. Eventually you can get larger cracks, but you get a longer lifespan, but it is expensive. So that's something that could be looked at, you know, you'd want to get a geotechnical report and figure out more details before deciding which way you'd want to go, but just know that for this is based on the asphalt pickleball courts, but there are options for that.
How old are the current pickleball courts?
That's a good question.
They were the tennis, they were all tennis before, right?
It's probably more than 20 years, I'm guessing.
Are they asphalt or concrete?
It's, there's concrete, but it's not post tensioned.
Okay.
So it looks, it's concrete, but then it had paint and different surfacing. But I tried looking down in the cracks and it looked like it was concrete rather than asphalt based on the aggregate. And also the, the, there's joints in it that are very straight, like a concrete contraction joint. There's some additional cracks, but those have separated a little bit more, but they're dead straight, which is what we see with the concrete.
Graces, right? Those used to be all.
All tennis.
Right.
Yeah, pick of all, there's none that.
That probably makes sense why they have those joints the way they do too.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So then we also included the lighting there so we could get some extended usage, especially in the spring and fall when it gets dark a little bit earlier. And then adding some restrooms and pavilion there as well as a parking lot expansion. The current parking lot in that area is kind of large for the number of cars that actually park there. So you wouldn't have to add a ton of pavement to get about twice as many cars there. So that that would be definitely beneficial to rework that parking lot with those pickleball courts.
I have a question.
Yes.
M. Flexible event pavilion on page two. Is that the existing pavilion that's by the playground? And there's a cute little picture of it at the bottom, which I like a lot. But according to where the parking is, it looks like it's existing pavilion. So I don't know if, what you would do to that.
Oh, that's, so that would be where the restroom building is. So that would replace the restroom building and be restrooms and a pavilion that would have actually I'll get, that's part of phase three. So I'll have some more info on that, but that, that's what that letter M is.
Thank you.
So all in all, you know, it's 3.7 million for that phase. But again, there's a decent chunk in there for the main drive repaving. Some of this could be, you know, the pickleball area would make sense to do as one project, but this could be broken down as needed. And all, all these phases could be broken down depending on what funding options are available. Phase three focuses on that splash pad and ice rink area with a new event pavilion. So this, you know, again, kind of makes sense to be one phase since it's all in the same area. We, we presented this to the Parks Committee last week and there was some discussion on whether this should be a priority over the pickleball courts. Depending who you ask, both the rest, current restroom and the current pickleball courts are in deteriorating condition. So again, depending on funding and interest, phase three could become phase two and vice versa, but so as you can see, kind of some of those pictures in the bottom that letter B, you can see the pavilion area would be kind of a four seasons pavilion with could have like garage doors that would come up. So in the summer you could have that more open air like a pavilion, but then in the winter have, have those closed. So you'd be able to get more usage out of that building. Adding in the kind of fire pit and seating area in that area as well to kind of create that winter destination place for the township. The splash pad and ice rink. There's again, several options for doing that ice rink. There's, you could do within the concrete slab, having the chilled tubing that would be best for maintenance, just because you have, it helps keep the ice. This winter we were pretty, would in pretty good shape with how consistently cold it was, but last winter it would have been a challenge keeping that ice rink, especially early on in the winter. So but you can also just have it flooded and then it's less money upfront, but more maintenance. There's also synthetic ice that's available, which is kind of panels that link together and it has a coating on it and it acts and skates very similarly to actual ice. You lose a little bit of the nostalgia and aesthetic of skating on actual ice, but you don't have to worry about the maintenance side of it nearly as much. So again, options there that can be explored and then how that integrates with the splash pad. You could have a ice rink and splash pad adjacent to each other. We kind of show a skating ribbon that would be around the splash pad area. And part of that splash pad could actually have the chilling tubes in the slab. So in the summer it could be a splash pad, in the winter it could be the ice rink. We just have some of the removable spray features. And then another thing that, you know, during the public input survey that was desired was shade around the existing playground. So we included just some some money in here for existing playground improvements such as like shade structures for that area. So this, we have about a million dollars in there for the event lodge and pavilion. Again, that'd be restrooms, the pavilion space that could have some heating in there as well. So it could be used during the winter. And then you can see about a million combined for the skating loop and splash pad. And again, especially that skating loop, that cost could vary depending on what, what is used, but that 600,000 would cover the kind of more expensive option of having some chilling equipment with that concrete. And then phase four. This the disc golf course was something that was also much kind of discussed in the survey and a lot of people are interested in that and use it frequently, but we didn't want to put a lot of money or effort into fixing that if it would need to be moved when these new things were shifted and constructed. So the disc golf course kind of rerouting as needed around these elements could be in the fourth phase. And then we also included the kind of additional amenities up by the soccer fields and baseball fields. And then that northwest parcel. And, and that was really just envisioned as a crushed gravel walking path. So it could kind of be an additional dog walking loop for outside of the actual dog park and some native plantings in that area. Again, not showing any permanent structures or permanent improvements there since it's not currently township property. But perhaps something could be worked out with Kent County Parks and Kent County to make that kind of a mutually beneficial area of the park. And then so just kind of those updates, again, putting in costs. We've kind of used 300,000 in there for the restroom and pavilion at the soccer field, the this one here, and then the one by the pickleball. That would include some of that cost is running the utilities to that area. That wouldn't all be just with the structure, but again, depending how big we wanted to make that, that number can fluctuate. We also included on here the perimeter walking trail. But again, this could definitely get shifted to an earlier phase, especially if we were doing asphalt on the main drive or one of the other parking lots. It could make sense to do that asphalt work as part of that project because that walking trails also getting in deteriorating condition. So that's kind of the breakdown we have of the phasing. And again, a lot depends on what funding becomes available and the best ways to make this happen. But the goal here was to kind of get a long range plan that we could work towards. And having a plan that we can also use for grant applications and, you know, we had great public input with a lot of responses on the survey. So that's important in, you know, addressing and, you know, the improvements that were in here really addressed those top items that were in the survey, such as the ice rink and pickleball and the walking trails. So a lot of information went into this and I think it's a good roadmap for where we could go. We can get the funding to help make it happen. Open to questions.
Size is your maintenance garage replacement?
Similar size to the existing one. So I forget the exact dimensions, I want to say like 50 by 30.
Not very big.
So it wasn't, we didn't need quite as big of a space since we have the other one at Burton. But it was still desired to have some maintenance capabilities here or equipment for the rec park because just for convenience, I don't know if you want to expand on that at all, but that was.
I mean, at, at Tassel Park, for example, we have, we have a small building there. And so it's just so we don't have to lug equipment, we can have utility vehicles, equipment, extra storage. So the building at Rec Park right now is falling apart. So something needs to be addressed there at some point.
Is the size about right, if you had to guess?
The size that we, I don't know what the size is off the top of my head, but the size that we have there right now is, is pretty good.
It's all 30 by 50.
It's 50 by 40.
It's by 40?
Yep. 30 by 40.
Looked at it today, it's a piece of junk.
It's still standing?
Barely.
It's, it's been on the maintenance list for as long as I've been on the Parks Committee, I think.
The driveway is awful.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say a couple of things. I know just for every, our new board members, just history wise, you started off by saying that you would not raise an eye and Jade and Dan, and these are not our ideas, just to be clear, this came to us originally. Part of the strategic plan was that maintenance and parks, that they wanted updates to parks. And the Parks Committee worked on the park survey and getting community feedback and the ideas within here. I just want to make it clear, those were not ideas that came, I, I think the way you just said it today, it sounded like we've been meeting about this and this is, you know, like our ideas and it's not.
It was feedback from the original ideas that helped shape this.
Yes, the parks.
This plan, but we wanted to.
In the parks committee. And then this was originally presented to us in November with
To the entire board, right?
To the entire board. With no phasing, no cost associated with anything, none of that. So we had asked that it goes back to kind of be broken out. So we have ideas on how much things would be costing, ideas on different phasing options. And just a different way to look at it versus here's this plan that costs $10 million. This is what we want to do. And as a board, we looked at it like, well, that, that's not how this is going to work. We need to see some costs associated with it. So, so when he says that he's been meeting with us, I think once or twice, not routinely, just to look at this, to make sure that it's broken out, to be presented to the board in a way that we can view it. To be able to look at it if something were to come up or funding were to come up for us to look at it, to, to talk about phasing and to know what needs to happen. And I think it's important also to note that there's certain things within the plan that I think should be prioritized maybe higher than others. That's just my opinion. We've had lots of complaints about maintenance of the park. And so I think, I know you had said today that, you know, the Parks Committee talked about, oh, can we switch these phases around? And, and there's certain things in this park though that need to happen. It is our park. We do need to maintain it. We do need to put some, some sort of money into it somewhere to make sure that it's suitable for residents. So I think that's, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. It sounded.
Yep.
I appreciate that breakdown as well. That we came back with. My only drawback is just that I'm leery to do something to every part of that park. I kind of less is more on this, but I think there's some, some, it's okay if there's a lot of space with nothing. You know, I know designers like to put something everywhere, but in my opinion, I, it's, some of it's a bit much. So it could be, we can talk about the specifics later. So I feel about that.
I, I was just going to say, I think you've put a lot of time into this. It's really clear. You know, there's some really cool aspects to this that I like. But then there's some things that think, well, we're dreaming really big there. Uh, but then there's some things that think, well, we're dreaming really big there.
Oh, sure. Yeah, no, it's not, would not be a small task to get this all completed for, but um, you never know. Who could be interested in funding um, something in the park, whether it was a. Something to do with a pickleball or the ice rink or whatever it may be. Um, so really that goal is to kind of get this long range vision established.
I understand the idea.
Good too about having some different prices associated with different parts that. There was funding available or somebody that wanted to donate money in a certain way. There's something for them to have an idea on how much things would cost.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing I just wanted to note, in our one or two meetings that we did have, these are softball fields or not baseball fields. I learned that from Dan. There's a distinct difference that I couldn't tell you. But just to clarify, because in the beginning you called them baseball fields, so I just.
Yes, softball fields, uh, they can be used for baseball, but the primary use would be softball and the design would be for that. Um, but especially for like the little league and younger kids that softball field is kind of more, more common. Um, with, with that age group, so.
One other, and I don't know if anybody knows, but I know, um, we, I just brought this up because like Sue, I had went out there, I don't know, back in October. So in a couple of different times to just walk around and look at it and see what the current. Structures are and how bad some of them look, but the Cascade Foundation Field sign, did we ever find out anything to do with that?
I talked to the community foundation and they are looking into their records because they had no record of it. He didn't know on the top of his.
All right, there's a beautiful sign, much newer. I saw this sign. To get into Rec Park.
Yeah.
By the baseball or softball fields that says Cascade Foundation Fields. And I'm like, well, if somebody funded something to put these fields up, why aren't we? I mean, we have this beautiful sign that they paid for, maybe we should.
Sign looks better than the field right now.
Yeah, I talked to Justin and he's.
Okay, so he's looking into it.
Yeah.
I have a question for Dan. Have you had a lot of requests for all these different age groups soccer fields?
Yeah, so um, one thing that um. Cindy and myself been working on is, is rentals this year. Um, we pretty much have. Um, soccer Monday through Friday rented from three to eight o'clock at night. Um, we do have um, some, a couple of travel teams that are going to use the softball fields. Um, but once again, we're also looking at doing some programming where we might do a, a T-ball clinic or a soccer clinic this summer. But I think one thing we got to remember too is we have a lot of green space out there that can be used for other things besides soccer. We could do um, a football clinic, we could do lacrosse, you know, you've heard me talk about ultimate frisbee. So, you know, I don't want to just designate those to soccer. Right now, we do have soccer rentals, but moving forward. Um, there's, there's a lot of green space that we can use for, for a lot of different, different recreational activities.
Excellent. You got here in the fall, right?
Uh, beginning of October.
Beginning of October and um, when you looked, when you've been looking at the um, the fees. How much did you estimate that in the past Cascade has been leaving on the table? That could be recouped by just charging slightly below or average rental costs that all the other neighboring communities already charge?
Um, Sydney calculated that out from what the best of, what we could find that was field use last year, it was around forty thousand. So you roughly had about twenty-five dollars. An hour we made because of the conditions of the fields. Um, it may be per time slot, but um, that's kind of what we're looking at. So eventually we're going to be able to really recoup costs once we get that in good shape.
But so we have the potential, easily the potential to make. Forty, to recoup forty thousand dollars and bring it back towards maintenance costs, which we haven't been doing in the past.
Correct.
Dan, just a simple question. Are you okay with this uh, master plan?
Well, I think one thing you got to remember when you look at the master plan is that. We have phases, but that's not to say in phase three, we put something out of phase three, like the restrooms and move it to phase one. So I think the phases are a guide, but then I think you can take pieces within the guide and move those pieces however you want to move them.
Sure, but overall you, you would broad brush this and say okey dokey.
Sure.
Based on feedback from residents, the second bathroom closer to the pickleball courts has been a high priority that I think might be worth looking at. Moving to phase one earlier. As well as connecting to city water.
Right, yeah, that could be done and then still serve the soccer fields if one pickleball moves, so.
Have we been irrigate, so you, what maintenance do you see that we haven't been doing that we can be doing? And how much of a difference will that make to get us?
So kind of a Reader's Digest version is, is that if you look at the athletic fields alone. Is that there's been no control over those fields. I had someone call and said they wanted to rent the field this Friday. I'm like, it's underwater. And they're already tore up as there is, as they are. For example, today, we went out. And the soccer goals that were out there, we, we um, brought them all in together and we chained them. So people can't be out there playing soccer, so we are not going to allow people on those fields until those fields are ready to play. Okay? So this spring, they're going to need a lot of work, but with all the activity, it's going to be kind of a, a slow progress. But then we've talked to the soccer people and we've told them, come around, that we'll use June first, for example. That those fields are going to be closed out there for rentals. So we can have a summer maintenance cycle. And during that summer maintenance cycle is when we can oversee. Um, do a lot of um, top dressing, those type of things to um, get them going for fall. Now, that's not to say we won't run some clinics out there, but the day to day pounding of those fields. Uh, we won't have that in the summer. Um, the softball fields where we played soccer on those outfield, we're not doing that anymore. Um, we do have twice a week, some uh, kids that are four or five years old that don't use goals that we'll let use the outfield. But that's a big difference too of, of protecting the softball fields. I have a company already lined up. I was hoping that they would um, get here last fall, but they're going to redo the infield. We already bought bases, new pitching rubbers, um, so just the aesthetics of the softball fields will look good. Um, to the Parks Department, they've been so strapped. In the past, they kind of would just flip on the irrigation. It might work, it might not work. And you're going to see our department now have a very more um, thorough understanding of how these systems run. We'll keep an eye on them. Um, like when I was in Holland, we ran supplemental irrigation. If we had to, we would check every day, are the heads turning, those type of things. And I mean, i- it's not their fault. I mean, they were just shorthanded, but those are the little things that we can make changes immediately. There's never been a fertilization prod, um, there's never been fertilization out there. That's going to happen this year. So culturally, there's a lot of things we can do. And so if you look at the phases, is that I think from a, from a standpoint of the Parks Department, just aesthetics wise. Um, can save the township a lot of money by just what we're going to do in-house to make things look better out there. And it's just not athletic fields. We're going to try to make the whole complex look better. Um, so one of the problems you have out there is a lot of it isn't irrigated. So, you know, moving forward, if we can get city water out there, that may irrigation, I would say would be more of a, a top priority. But um, you know, just the stuff we're going to do in-house, I think you'll see a big difference, not only at Rec Park, but all parks, so.
And that's, you know, some of that stuff he mentioned was in here with costs associated for contractors to do that. And I didn't want to, you know, volunteer Dan and our, our staff that they have to do all that. So we, we had it in here intentionally as contractor pricing, but the more that they can do, that's awesome. Because that, that really does help sa- save a lot of money. So it's, yeah, great to hear.
I think the, you know, the important thing is how that park is going to be managed, you're going to see a, a big difference. I can't wave and wand, snap my fingers, but through the course of the equipment that the board approved. And you know, we're adding more staff, I really think you're going to see a difference out there, so.
That's the number one complaint that at least I heard from residents for years was the lack of maintenance on public property. You know, you put in a really nice park like Tassel Park, but then it, you don't maintain it. And there was a lot of frustration from residents, which then led to frustration at the, you know, by the elected officials. But i- it, it feels like um, we have the right equipment and the right people in place now to. On top of that.
You know, one of, you know, to expand on what you're saying there is, is pe- people like going to parks, they like. Driving through parks, they like walking through parks. And to me, that is, is, you know, that's a reflection of Cascade Township. And um, it really is the drive that I have every day. When people go through our park system to say, wow, this is, this is well-maintained park system. You know, and I think the board's on the right track of, with the equipment and the funding and in the direction that, that the Parks Department is going. Um, so, but that's my drive, because when I go through a park and something doesn't look good, it drives me crazy, so.
Well, and the one thing, I don't think that Cascade hadn't done it, but there are other options available. Like there's a lot of philanthropy in the area, lots of businesses in the area that, that do community things, fundraising. And I don't know why, but in the past, the township just didn't do that. They were, they kind of internalized everything. Um, or do, but then the flip side is. If you look inward, but then you're not doing it, well, then people on the outside are less likely to donate or get excited about giving things, you know, putting in place, making things in. Because Cascade was kind of a. Wasteland for, but I mean, the Tassel Park, twenty years old, and all we did was get complaints about it. So we're more likely to get private funding. People who want to participate, I think.
Yeah, if, if the, if the board wants to go that direction, there, there's. I believe there's a lot of corporate dollars out there that you can go chase. That you can do naming rights of fields, you can, you want to put your name on this pavilion or this new restroom. Right, it's a check for a million dollar. I mean, there's, there's so many things you can do if you, if you chase those dollars, so.
I think our neighboring communities do a pretty good job of that.
Well, we should do.
I'm not sure, yeah, we've been leaving a lot on the table, but we got to show them that we can take care of it, so that's good. Is there a proposed timeline? You guys kind of hit on this, but as we sit right now.
Five to fifty years, no. That it, um, so the first phase, like you mentioned, is a lot of things that is deferred maintenance that we can do in-house or smaller projects. Um, there are DNR grants, um, they are do, applications do April first each year. So April first of next year, we could, you know, consider applying for, you know, one, one of these items. Uh, through that grant and you can get up to five hundred thousand dollars um, through LWCF for four hundred thousand through the trust, trust fund. Um, so that could be an option, uh, but I think, you know, having some of this, like the ball fields upgraded, the soccer fields fixed up. We'll get a better idea of how some of these things are, can actually be used. Um, and then there's that grant funding that's available. Um, you know, a lot of neighboring communities have parks, millages, that something can be explored. Um, so yeah, it really depends on the funding and especially if you can get a private donation for a certain item. That all of a sudden, move, move it up in the prioritization and phasing.
Jade, um, how would we go about, say that you get the blessing in general from the board with some modifications? How would we go about starting to budget and pay for these improvements?
Well, I think a couple of different comments, but the, where we would start as a CIP, um, we would make sure the capital improvement plan. So we would amend the CIP, which we do on an annual basis with the budget to incorporate the rec plan, master plan. And these phases, if that's what the board desired to do. From there, then we would look and work towards the funding mechanism and work those into the budget on an annual basis. Could be possible mileage, but again, that takes the will of the board to go out to the people and have that voted on. We could look at grants, um, so there's, i- if it's in the CIP and that's the, the way that we're going, then we would. Move towards that in that direction and secure some funding. Kind of on. A, a kind of a side comment, but something that's come up during this process that I really dug into and started to look at was. You know, we're, we're jumping ahead and trying to do a master plan, which by the way, this is a concept only. This is not a hard, a hard design. But when you look back at the Parks and Rec Master Plan that was approved in twenty twenty-three, it was approved December of twenty twenty-two, to take effect in twenty-three. The first three items of action in twenty twenty-three were maintenance plans to create one for the parks. Create a checklist, create a maintenance and improvement budget in the budget. None of that got done until twenty twenty-four. So I think this is a, a great start to moving forward for improvements out there. But this is a very aggressive Parks Master Plan, not just Rec Park, but the Parks Master Plan. That we have to get those ducks in a row in order to um, to make something like this. To see the value and to make sure it's really the direction we want to go. Because if you haven't done the first three, which are the main, that's then. You know, you're, you're kind of, you're going backwards.
I just want to say something, you said the M word, um.
What was the M word? Oh.
Which I don't think most people like to hear, but I just wanted to make a note to our open space millage, when does it expire?
Twenty twenty-seven.
And that, so it sounds like we have a millage for open space. What does that actually?
It, it's to fund the purchase of.
I would have brought my.
No, I already.
Well, it was very specific back when it was passed. It's for the acquisition and maintenance of uh, our park space.
East and Burton specifically.
East and Burton specifically, but it is not only for those two, and that's not what the millage language said. I know the, that was what we told the residents, but.
And that's what we as board members have previously been told as well.
Previous. The millage language.
That money was only to be used for those two parks under the open space millage. But I, my question was just when it expires mentally.
So and if I'm as a resident, you look at the different millages, we already have an open space millage. But that was put in place to pay off those two properties specifically. Even though I know that the wording we've looked at, we're not limited to, and that expires in twenty twenty-seven. So if residents have a desire to put, you know, I think most communities around us do have a parks millage.
Yeah, so that's something that um, we've talked about as a board and, or you have talked about as a board, but we will look at that renewal language twenty twenty-six.
And we didn't even talk about it because before you start talking millage, people have to trust that you're spending the money you do have already and. Got to get your ducks in a row.
Good.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming back multiple times. Article five, public comments. This is the time to comment on anything that's scheduled for tonight's agenda. So we've got the park plan at the Rec Park, um, and poverty tax exemption. Possible sale of a fire truck and also changing of a precinct location.
About Spalding.
And Spalding, thank you. Rezoning.
Hi there, it's Kevin Torgman. I'm assuming the reason for the Spalding uh, rezoning is because the old PUD is expired. It's not laid out in there. Um, I trust that, that. Since the prior, um. I believe it, people tried to redo it. Have we been in contact with them throughout this process again, since obviously that whole. The original PUD that was approved is expired and nothing really came out of that and they wanted to modify it. So obviously this has to go back to ARC, they have to reapply for another PUD. I'm guessing if they want to go ahead, I'm guessing they're not just going to let thirty-two acres of real estate just go away. But if they aren't ma- wanting to. Put in a new subdivision there or neighborhood, um, is there anything that the township could do to at least maybe? Help bring it, or at least direct those people to bring it back to what it was, since that retention pound was all filled in and. Things of that nature. Also, I'm assuming since they had Kim in before and they wanted to have forty-two. Township recommended under forty, and obviously they're not going to come back with like what happened at the parcel in Ada. At the end of Face Street where they crammed sixteen lots into four acres. This having thirty-two acres, they could theoretically get over a hundred lots if they wanted to. Not that this board would allow that, I would hope, but I'm assuming that's uh, sort of what's going on there. Also, the fire truck, good job, let's get rid of it. And also the uh, park plan I think would be good. Um, but I agree with the Clerk Slater. You don't have to fill it all out, you know, let's fix some of the things. If we got to do asphalt. Anytime I've ever at the park, the walking path is always being used. And there are some very, very bad spots in there. So if there's any asphalt work, please throw that in there as, as well. And I did look at satellite imagery, um, when I went to the Parks Meeting uh, last month or whenever, or earlier this month. Um, and the tennis courts are probably over twenty years old, so from what I could see. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we can go over some of those questions about the Spalding property when we get there.
Great, thank you.
Approval of the consent agenda, article six. Approval of the consent agenda, article six.
If one makes motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
So motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions are article seven, discussion or emotion?
Supervisor Last Prince, I have, uh, some discussion.
Okay.
I have a question for manager Smith, if that's okay.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yes. Manager Smith, I noticed, uh, in the building department, they had about four thousand dollars in mileage expenses reimbursements. When we met in January, we talked about a potential, uh, fleet program or pool program. Have you had an opportunity to look into that? And did you have anything that you came back with from an ROI perspective?
I have not had a chance to go into the detail on it, um, as of yet, but I can tell you that if we were going to do that, we would be purchasing about ten vehicles within our fleet. Um, at probably thirty, forty thousand dollars a pop right at the top, and then you'd have fuel and maintenance on top of that. Um, and then, uh, maintenance costs from their internal staff or contracting it out. But I have not put a full business model or plan together for creating a fleet department, um, or purchasing fleet for the township.
Is that something that you could look into at some point?
Of course.
When do you think you could do that?
Well, if we're going to consider something like that, it's a pretty big budget item, which I would probably incorporate into the budget season. So that budget will be done mid-year this year.
June, July?
We could look at it at that point. I, I would really have to look at all of the components of creating that and, and work that in. It would be.
It would be. If, if there's a savings, we're spending a lot on reimbursement.
Well, I don't, and I would be foolish to put an ROI on that and try and, um, calculate that out with, uh. With just starting it up, so.
I think if we just looked at the cost of reimbursement as a function of the ROI, I think we could get there pretty quickly. No?
Sure. Thank you.
I think in the past, there was discussion about, about that exact thing, um. Maybe in a prior CIP when we're on the planning commission, I don't know if anybody up here remembers anything. About that number of years ago, but I, I remember the, a former manager bringing up the same concept, but I don't remember. I would, at the planning commission level, I would have been involved in hearing the next phase of that, but I don't know why it died, but clearly it didn't.
I know it, it, there was some talk about it and I have some limited history or knowledge of what happened historically, which was one employees didn't want it. So it was never.
Okay.
Saw through, nor was there anyone there to enforce the process to be implemented in the first place. Uh, we would actually have some, um, operational changes too, because I would not allow those cars to be taken home. There's liability with that. Um, right now, I know when our building department, when the inspectors go out during, for the day, for the afternoon, they don't come back. So we'd have some operational changes for sure.
Additional discussion? Motion?
Shipley makes a motion to, uh, approve the invoices to be paid on two twenty-seven of twenty-five. And also approve the financial statements dated December, twenty twenty-four.
Some motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange to approve the financial actions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article nine, new business, zero, one, five, twenty twenty-five. Approval of resolution for the property tax, or excuse me, poverty tax exemption. We have township assessor Jennifer Genter here tonight to walk us through it. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me without the microphone?
Not very well.
I'll, I'll watch. Yeah, let's. I'm not shy. You don't know that one the most. I want to see you. Good evening.
Um, so we have the poverty, um, well, first I'll say good evening. Um, the township board tonight is asked to adopt a resolution for the poverty exemption, hardship exemption. Um, that we set annually. It is based on the two thousand twenty-five federal guidelines. And we can't go any lower than that. I included that in the packet for you guys. Um, and that is in the resolution with also an asset test. This is now required. Um, by the state tax commission, uh, it is going to be in our audit that is coming up in two thousand twenty-six. So I am checking all the boxes. Um, so I'm just asking that you approve this resolution. We have not had anyone apply, um, in several years, but we always have to be prepared should anyone need it. And so we would like you to adopt this and pass the resolution so we can be stettorally set.
What happens if we don't?
Um, we will not be in compliance with the state tax commission and we will not pass our audit.
It's threatening us, Jen.
I am not threatening you. Um, we are at the. You guys can set it differently. If you would like me to change or adopt something differently, I can update it, but. This is the lowest that we can set it. Um, so we're just, we adopt it based on what the state tax commission guidelines recommend.
Inasmuch as this is a common sense housekeeping item, also required by the state and by common sense and giving our. Uh, anybody that meets that level of, uh, poverty, giving them a fair shake. I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the poverty exemption.
Support.
So motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Riz- Rizzi, who approved the resolution as stated for the poverty exemption. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Yes.
Trustee Rissy.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Nord Hook.
Yes.
Later, yes.
Yes, thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item zero, one, six, twenty twenty-five. Possible approval of the sale of an outdated fire truck. And we've got fire inspector Hell and also lieutenant Pool in here tonight. To present it. Or Jade?
Pool, Pool murder.
Oh, what did I say?
Pool.
I'm sorry. Hell, Poolman.
Yeah.
Jade.
Yeah, just in summary, um, we in the next few weeks will be taking delivery of the new fire engine, which has been on order for going on two years. Um, with that, we're reevaluating the fleet or the fire departments reevaluated, reevaluated their fleet. There's two vehicles they looked at and they want to keep the rescue, um. I'm sorry, the fired, uh, the, the engine in service and sell the rescue. Um, there's only twelve thousand miles on it and it's a two thousand and eighteen vehicle. Um, so with that, they've identified, uh, some brokers that they can work, that they can work with the township to, um. Auction this and get our top dollar. And so we are asking for approval tonight to, uh. Because of the dollar amount of the asset per our, um, property disposition, um, our asset disposition, uh, policy. It needs to come to the board for approval for us to move in this fashion. And then any realized revenue that comes from this will go back into the fire fund. Anything to add?
Okay, first questions.
I remember when we approved the purchase of this, what was at that time called a heavy rescue. Uh, it adds no value to the insurance rates that we as residents pay. Those insurance rates are based upon, uh, a fire, uh, frontline apparatus, a pumper. Um, just talking to the fire department, the, the plan is that they don't need this. Since the technology and the fire apparatus construction has changed over several years. And they would rather keep a class A pumper available than a truck that doesn't add any value to the township. Or to rescue operations. So with that, um, I recommend approving the sale of the fire department vehicle as proposed. From the fire department, we should not be micromanaging competent, uh, leadership.
Support.
Further discussion? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the sale of the fire department vehicle as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for coming in. Last item of new business, zero, one, seven, twenty twenty-five. Consider approval of resolution to amend the zoning map. Or I would say the zoning for seventeen oh one Spalding Avenue, rezoning it to agricultural rural conservation, otherwise known as ARC. Planning director Henrik, and we're lucky we have turning home here here tonight.
And former planning commissioners who were, have been part of this fun process the whole way along.
Pretty much locked and loaded.
Let's go. So November of two thousand twenty-four, we had, um, an applicant who applied and was heard at the planning commission. For an amendment to the planned unit development, um, located at seventeen oh one Spalding, which was, uh. Informally referred to as PUD ninety-seven. This planned unit development in, in doing the research, we found that within the ordinance document, there was multiple. Requirements by the property owner, owner that never occurred. Some of those included, um, recording the planned unit development. With the Kent County Register of Deeds, signing the planned unit development, yeah, a statement within that document, it was never signed. Um, creating a site condominium and rules and bylaws. And recording those with the master deed. So numerous items that just left us like, okay, this was done in two thousand seventeen. They did a bunch of, uh. Site clearing, which left the site, um. Vulnerable to erosion and then just kind of didn't do anything for five years and then put the property up for sale. It sits there, um, they do have some erosion control on the site now, but we were left with this conversation after the planning commission. Um, rejected this application. We were left with kind of situation, what, what do we do with these planned unit developments in the community? Where an applicant is supposed to fulfill, um, commitments that they never do. So I had shifted. I threw that question onto Homier and his team and said, I don't want to figure this out, let him, let him figure this out. So after, uh, you know, reviewing the whole plan unit development, we found that per our ordinance, per the agreement. Um, and, and per the planning enabling act, we should just take this back for rezoning. For the, um, zoning enabling act, rezonings can be initiated by the property owner or by the township. And in this case, we are still working with potentially getting an application from the property owner, but they would like to per, to pursue a rezoning anyway.
Has the property sold since the original entered the PUD?
There is a purchase agreement. That property owner still owns a property. There's some complexity with. Maybe the entity that it's owned under that I think that the partners within that entity have fallen.
Does that affect us or is that their problem?
That's their problem. Uh, but I, I think the best way to do this is just to be clean about it. We have the ability to rezone it. And I think because it sits in limbo, um, it's best for the township to initiate a map amendment to the planned unit development.
Putting it back to what it originally was.
Yes.
And just a question while we have attorney home here, was it right when the applicant came within the last several? And who's the applicant, the same owner?
The applicant actually had a purchase agreement with the owner. It was a new applicant.
Were they correct or were we correct to call it an amendment of a PUD if it in fact had expired?
I don't know that there's like the best situation. There's so many messy, let's ask. Mr. Homier.
And it might not even matter.
I, I. Yeah, I, I'm not sure at the end of the day it mattered. Um, you know, it was, it was denied, but it was noted, um, as I recall at that meeting that it had expired. So that was part of the basis for that denial as well. Um, we took a look at it, concluded, um, as, um. Andrea stated and said, yeah, this is expired. They didn't fulfill those requirements and, um. We're just taking it back to the original zoning. So, um, and we think that that's likely a cleaner, um, solution here too. So what this resolution does is refer this back to the planning commission to consider this amendment. To the zoning ordinance, which would constitute a map amendment, returning it to ARC. What the owner does from here on out is going to be subject to whatever, um. Decisions they make under your existing zoning ordinance for whatever it is they do.
Do we have any teeth as far as any remediation like that of erosion? Is there anything that we could require of the current owner or hold over him to get any of that taken care of?
Maybe not an issue that we looked at, but we can look at, um, some enforcement issues if there are violations regarding soil and sedimentation. Um, I don't know enough because we weren't asked to look at that part of it yet, um, to determine whether there are or, or not. I, I know that part of the failing was the soil and erosion plan, um, the sedimentation erosion plan that wasn't submitted to. So, um, that may be an issue that, um, that we need to pursue, but we haven't looked at it yet.
Could you look at it?
Yep.
I'm, I'm glad the planning commission unanimously, um, that that was good.
I'm comfortable, uh, I have some familiarity with the site now, so I would be comfortable to make a motion. Uh, to pass a resolution to direct planning commission to rezone this to ARC and update the zoning map as needed.
It's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by treasurer Corstange. Who approved the resolution, amending the zoning map for seventeen oh one Spalding Avenue. Back to ARC, um, at the planning commission. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nord Hook.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange, yes. Trustee Rissy.
Yes.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Later, yes. Supervisor Last.
Yes, motion carried.
Supervisor Last, can I ask a question? I'll legal counselize here about that. So if, if the planning commission takes this up then and they. Uh, move forward to rezone it, then does it come back to the board?
It does. Yeah, fine. Sorry. Follows the normal process for rezoning. So they'll have a public hearing, make a recommendation when it comes.
And say their recommendation is no, then it comes to the board, we could still just do it anyways.
Correct.
Item zero, one, eight, twenty twenty-five. Consider approval of resolution for relocating precinct number one to fire station one. Works later?
Thank you. Um, as is in your packet, precinct one location has been the Forest Hills administration for many decades. And they're no longer using that building, nor are they allowing us to use it. Uh, they built a new admin building and it's outside of Cascade Township. So we had to issue for precinct one. And so we are proposing fire station one to be the new precinct one location. I had spoken to fire chief about this probably a year and a half ago. So, um, they're aware of what our needs are. I've been over there and looked at it in terms of the layout of our precinct. It's actually got quite a bit more room. So we would look forward to using that with the, starting with our May election, actually, we have a special election with Forest Hills and. So the only expense involved in that movement is just mailing a postcard to inform the voters in precinct one that their location has changed with the estimated cost of twelve hundred dollars. Um, upon approval by the board of trustees, clerk's office will notify county, state and all the parties involved. And will mail new voter cards to precinct one. And then also I just want to comment that the folks who've been voting in precinct one are very happy about this change. So. They're, they're.
What's the?
They know it's coming.
What's precinct one? Is that like Sentinel Point?
Precinct one is the top northwest corner of the township.
And then just one, just question about, just when, whenever we think about voting at a fire station, just. People getting in and out voting versus the fire department needing to leave for an emergency call has.
And.
Yep. Wonder what the.
So we've also been using Patrick Fire Station as precinct four for many years. And the fire department staff and chief majors have been extremely accommodating in terms of. Helping us get set up in there. Some things we can't do until the morning of, we have to, you know, warn B and G that we have to set something up. Real early and Jennifer's been great at helping with that and organizing that. So they have to move the trucks out. Of the bays, I believe that's correct. So they're outside of the building and then we block it off so that, um, voters can't drive in the area where the trucks need to leave. So it's constantly available for fire department. It's first priority.
So you have to run from the, you run from the building out to your truck? Is that what happens?
I'm sorry.
So you're in the building, but you have to run out to your truck to get into it to me.
Yeah.
What's the plan for parking? That lot is very small.
Yes, so I spoke with them about that as well and, um. They gave me, Oton Albright gave me the name of the owner of the building that has the goldfish swim school. So we'll be talking to them and asking for permission and if you need any kind of written agreement, we'll get that so that. So we'll be talking to them and asking for permission. And if you need any kind of written agreement, we'll get that so that we can use parking on that day.
Is this a little premature without having a parking plan?
Should we wait until we get that approval? Just because that lot is so small?
I, I, this is a question for everybody.
Right. I mean, that, that would be my question. We're going to move it, but we don't have. Jennifer, can you speak to that?
The May election is going to be very small, so it's kind of a test. We can see tr- flow of traffic. But you're right, a presidential primary, a governor, the midterms. But we find with this early voting, it's decreased the volume of voters significantly. So I think this year, we're going to see how that precinct will work. And then looking at the voter demographics, where they're going, it's greatly reduced with early voting and absentee.
We had like, I remember showing up for, at a meeting, there was maybe two or three employee vehicles in that parking lot, myself. Three or four other people that were coming to it and I got the last, I got the last parking spot.
Have to park on the side of the driveway.
That's just, I'd say, there is not enough parking, so we'd have to come up with.
Oh, this, it appears as those, this would be the ideal time to shake out any of the bugs in the site location.
The bugs might not crawl out this time because there's not very many, but then the bugs are going to come out in the future.
Call exterminator.
We can, we can reconvene after the May election. I think this upcoming election snuck up on some of us. I don't think anyone was expecting to have these elections. I do know I talked with the chief too, and yeah, if uh one of the, the bigger elections, it would be a much bigger concern. Uh, but I think we could regroup after this election and, and re, reassess the location and then also traffic flow. Because the traffic flow is different at Batrick than it is at the station. So um, we definitely can take a look.
And I honestly, I don't have a good answer if, if that has a high volume because by election law, we're required to use a public facility. And so we don't have a lot of options. I guess we'll have to uh sort that out as we go, but.
And churches are considered public facilities?
Churches are considered public facilities, but we've been, um, let's say, asked to vote elsewhere from two of them. So my options are limited.
From the churches.
Hey, Mike, I have a question for you. If the township rented a facility for the day, is that, is that considered a public facility for the day? I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I, well, certainly the statutes allow uh the township to lease property. So I don't know why it would be any different than any other lease agreement for that purpose.
Okay. Got a lot of empty commercial sites and uh around town.
We just use the museum again.
Sorry? Yes. Parking's an issue there, but yeah.
With the inclusion of a couple of typos, for instance, uh reciprocal, uh, we forgot to put in the word no longer available. It says longer available.
I don't see what you're talking about, John. Is that on the resolution?
Yeah, um.
Oh, correct. Yeah, I should say is no longer real.
There you go.
I missed it.
With, with that correction, then I make a motion that we uh approve the relocation of precinct one to fire station one. And just a little side note, I think it's great that our, our residents will have the opportunity to see the inside of a building that they don't normally get to see.
I'll second that.
Additional discussions? It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported.
I was just making a comment. I find it interesting that the election the school wants and, but they won't let us use the building that's sitting there empty vacant for that election. Yeah, go on. Just pointing the obvious out.
So that's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater, to approve resolution, uh, the resolution to relocate precinct one as stated. Works later, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Yes.
Trustee Rissy.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Nord Hook.
Yes.
Later, yes. Supervisor Laspert.
Yes. Motion carried. Second set of public comments. Uh, now is the time to comment on anything, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not. And we do have our two community policing officers here tonight also, so feel free to put them on the spot, especially if you're going to complain about the hotel ordinance.
No, I, well, I'd like to put that on too, but you just voted on something that didn't we just buy a stone house up there on the hill? Is that considered the property of the township?
Yes.
Why didn't you use that for an election place instead of tying up a firehouse?
Think about.
Well, it's too late now. You just voted on it.
Well, again, this is a small election, so it's a good time to test it out.
Okay. But I just thought you spent a lot of money on a house. It's just sitting there empty all the time. We could use it one day a week. I mean, for an election, so. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi. Nick Cattrellis, twenty nine eighty five, pork. At the last board meeting, uh, three resolutions were voted on and approved to adjust the salaries of the treasurer, the supervisor and the clerk. I happen to believe that those salaries were too low and that the adjustments were warranted. However, I have two questions about that process. The first, the resolution had blank spaces for the salary adjustments. Yet during the meeting, trustee Nord Hook made three motions to adjust the salaries of the clerk and treasurer to forty three thousand and to adjust the salary of the supervisor to forty eight thousand. Since the resolution in the meeting packet left those salary, the salary numbers blank, at what point did the board determine what those salaries adjustments should be? Did trustee Nord Hook fill in the blanks on the fly or did the board meet at some other point to agree on those adjustments? Um, please explain how you went about arriving at those salary numbers. And my last question is, um, the resolution's read in part, and I quote, upon approval of the salary adjustments, the adjustments will be put into effect in retroactive to January first. What? You know what I'm, where I'm going with this?
It was, that's incorrect. Yes.
Okay.
That was a great question. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say, because I know that the law in Michigan states that you can't um authorize retroactive payments.
Correct.
Okay.
So that is effective the date the board passed the resolution.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone virtually? Manager comments?
Uh, I just have three quick things. Um, we have our sheriff's office present tonight. Um, they will also be here at our next meeting to do a, an update on the overall status of Cascade and also give some deeper details on the hotel ordinance results. Um, I'll probably have some additional information from the township's perspective as well, uh, but they'll be here at our next meeting as well to present. I do have a meeting because I know it comes up quite frequently here. I do have a meeting with the Kent County Road Commission, myself and engineer Thorn next week in regards to putting up the signs for Jake breaks. Um, we met with, talked with Jerry. He wants to get together with his traffic engineers and decide the next steps there. So, so with something that should be so simple, um, is now turned into a meeting of five people. Um, and then the other thing I just wanted to let everybody know, I think everybody's been waiting for this, is that tomorrow Taco's Al Canado is reopening at ten o'clock in the morning. Two dollar tacos all day.
In a live mariachi.
In a live mariachi band. So I think we'll be getting Mexican at township hall. Right?
We're on it. Katie and I are all over it.
So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Board comments. Trustee Shipley?
Well, thank everybody for coming. Our law enforcement officers, always happy to see you guys out here. Ken, Scott, Nick, thanks for double checking these things. We appreciate that. And uh, if you got neighbors, bring them back next month for our next meeting too.
Trustee Nord Dyke. Trustee Risen. Trustee Norton?
Yes.
I, I just have a couple of little things. One, um, we get a lot of resident concerns about condition of roads that are outside of our local control. And I did notice from um, our township engineer, the twenty eighth street will be resurfaced as scheduled this year to get resurfaced from Craft to Cascade Road, which I think is a huge win. I don't want to deal with the traffic part of getting lane closures, but I think that's a huge thing. That is a section that we have had public comment about that specific section of road. So that is scheduled for the county to resurface this year. Um, just so everyone knows that. And then the other thing, um, I know we'll talk about this more when it gets closer, but we are having a community Easter egg hunt this year. One of the big asks from the residents was to have more community events. And Sydney and Dan are working hard on putting together an Easter egg hunt this year at Rec Park. I think it's at ten AM on the Saturday right before Easter.
Yeah, so it'd be April nineteen, at ten o'clock. And um, if you know anybody that wants to donate, um, we've been Sydney was out today going door to door handing out flyers, but if anybody on the board or anybody out there wants to donate to help for the cause, we'll, we'll get with us on that. We'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so we'll talk more once it gets closer, just to remind everybody, but put it on your calendars. Tell anybody you know. I think it's exciting. This is one of the things that residents have really said they wanted, were community events. And I think it's good to see these things coming. So, that's all I got.
Works later?
No comments.
Uh, just real quick to address yours. I can't speak for trustee Nord Hook, but I can say that from reading the packet, um you take the range, which is based on the averages, which is based on others in Kent County. You got the range between forty five and fifty. Cut that in half, forty, it's pretty close. And the same rationale would be for the treasurers. But let's say there were some comments made on Facebook that just weren't accurate, so I'm not going to chase it down, but I think that they were very much deserved and I don't have a problem with them.
And they were. You're correct. They were not retroactive. They were effective to date.
But the board doesn't get together, well, they shouldn't. And that's why those subcommittee meetings that they used to have aren't happening anymore. So there was no collusion or anything like that. That's all I have. Is our motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support. All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.